Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Environment Sustainability Committee meeting number seven of 2022 on the 11th of August. Check council attendance and everyone is here. There are no apologies. Acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land upon which we meet. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, cultures and stories of a proud people. Are there any declarations of interest in matters on the agenda? No? Business outstanding, there is none. Move to confirmation of minutes of the Environment Sustainability Committee meeting number six of 2022 on the 14th of July. Do I have a mover? councillor Kunsmann, seconda? Mayor Harding. Recommendation is that the Minister for the Environment Sustainability Committee held on the 14th of July be confirmed. Is there any discussion? No? I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Unanimous and carried. Thank you. Officers' reports. Urban greening plan. This is a report concerning the final submission of the City of Ipswich Urban Greening Plan 21 to 26 to council for adoption. The intention of this urban greening plan is to set an informed and evidence-based direction in achieving increased vegetation cover in priority areas within the urban footprint of Ipswich to best achieve the multiple benefits associated with increasing urban green space and canopy. Recommendation as per the agenda. Do I have a mover? Thank you councillor Fekner. Seconda councillor Kunsmann. Does any member of committee wish to speak to? Ask any questions of an officer? No? I'll open the matter for discussion. Councillor Kunsmann? Microphone?
Brief statement if I may. I thank council officers for the production of this plan and I endorse the principles and the intention. I think that this plan is ambitious in seeking to incorporate greening within the strategic contents, context of other visionary ideas about cooling, beautification, sustainability and conservation. And of course, this is all happening within the context of climate change and modifying the effects of heating. In the daily scrabble and negotiation in council, what we actually end up with too often is the production of more hard surfaces, roads, curbs, footpaths and car parks. Having endorsed the plan, it is up to councillors to ensure that future budgets contribute to the establishment and maintenance of this plan and also serve to monitor and protect its values and benefits. Also, council has an obligation to encourage private participation through education and by example. There is a vision here, a city with generous canopy, contributing to a community that is livable, walkable and nourishing.
Thank you councillor Kunsmann. I could not agree more. Thank you very much for your detailed comments. Any other member of committee wish to discuss? Councillor Fekner?
Yeah, thanks Chair. I just want to echo the sentiment of councillor Kunsmann's comments put so beautifully this morning. Thank you councillor Kunsmann. This is a piece of work that we as councillors have been involved in and at every point of consultation, the councillors have embraced this with open arms. We as a council have brought so many new green initiatives to the forefront of the way that we do business here at council and this is just another one to chalk up. I love that there are tangible outcomes. That would happen immediately if this committee and council, indeed council, decide to take on the urban greening plan where there's two spots identified to roll this out immediately. Last night I had the privilege of meeting Mr Stephen Burgess, who's in town for a little bit. And I guess his shtick is livable cities. So we had a discussion with some local businesses within Ipswich about what livability means to them and what active and thriving cities look like into the future and what cities and cityscapes attract more people to come into town, to spend more, to hang out. And while we did discuss broad-ranging ideas, there was one very fundamental thing that I took away from that discussion last night and was that we need to plant more trees. We need to make the city more green and more beautiful. And we've heard time and time again from residents, they don't like it when trees have to be removed for development. We get that, that's a necessity. But you know, this is a commitment from council to go some way to replanting those trees and actually thinking about, you know, the technical aspects of planting a tree. It's not just as easy to plant, not just, you know, the easy thing to do is plant a tree, but you need to think about how we take care of those things. What sort of water infrastructure is close to the trees that are planted? Can we rely on the community to partner with them to take care of these trees as well? I think that, you know, there's a real community effort and a push to be more collaborative in here, but also a push to be very technical about how this is actually going to be delivered, you know, so that we get the most success out of a plan like this. So I want to thank the council offices involved. Thank you to Mr Smith, who's had us on every step of the journey. It's been great. We know that our city wants more trees. I mean, look at the Sustainability Forum when we had lots of young primary school kids, you know, telling us that they want to see a greener, more beautiful city. And we know it's not always easy, but this plan goes a long way to planting a flag in the ground as another green initiative of this political administration and I'm proud of that.
Thank you councillor Fekner. That's very well said and the insights that you delivered there from your meeting. Yes councillor Kunsmann, you are.
I just note the intention that this is a 20-year plan and I'm very pleased that we're doing what we should be doing, which is looking to the future and for councils and councillors beyond us to bind them to this programme and so that we will realise the benefits.
Yes, and I absolutely take your point and support your point in that as elected representatives we are then responsible for ensuring that we manage funding for the programme. Nothing happens without that. Any further concerns? Councillor Mason?
Thank you councillor Milligan. I speak in support of the urban greening plan. It was just one of the strategic priorities for the plan that I wanted to highlight, increased property values. In future iterations of the plan, I will be supportive of that being removed. Every other strategic priority is for an ethically clear reason and it's something that's good for our city, but I don't think we should have any goals about increased property values, given that we have a housing crisis in south-east Queensland. I think you plant a tree because it's morally right to plant a tree, not because you want reward in terms of financial benefit. We can talk about as much ethics as we want after the meeting with any of you. That's just a particular priority that I read out and I said, hey, it's not a priority for me. The environment is more about the social and ethical reasons for me. That's why I think we need to make improvements. And part of livability in cities is affordability. And I don't want to see people displaced economically by increased house prices. I do acknowledge that suburbs with higher tree cover do average out to have a higher house price, but that's certainly not a focus of mine and may we all be reminded of that this morning.
Thank you councillor Mason. I think everything that has been discussed so far is clearly encapsulated in the vision within the draft. It's one sentence, "Our vision is to have a connected, resilient and valued greening of Ipswich that is protected, enhanced and managed to provide benefits to the community and environment." You cannot say it better than that, I believe. Any further comments? No? Then I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Unanimous and carried. Thank you. Item three is results of the 2021-22 platypus monitoring programme. This is a report concerning the results of Ipswich City Council's 2122 platypus monitoring programme. The sampling represents the six platypus monitoring event council has undertaken across the city's waterways in the last seven years. The ongoing programme aims to inform our understanding of the distribution of platypus in the city's waterways and to detect any changes or impacts to their populations. This year's results indicated a severe decline in local platypus populations, which is concerning and emphasises some key threats to the health of our waterways and the importance of council's ongoing monitoring and waterway improvement programmes. The recommendation is in two parts as detailed. Do I have a mover? Thank you councillor Fekner. A seconda? Councillor Kunsmann, thank you. Does any member of committee wish to ask any questions? Thank you, Mayor Harding.
Yes, I'd like to ask a question about the programme.
Yeah. I'll call forward the appropriate officer.
Morning Mayor, Chair, councillors. Phil Smith, Natural, Environment and Land Manager.
Good morning, Mrs Smith. Thank you. May?
Through the Chair. Thank you, Mr Smith. Obviously, these figures are quite concerning for us. May I ask, do we know how much of it is due to flood and how much of it is just due to the development and for us to be better managers or, you know, that type of thing? So do we know what's happening in other parts of south-east Queensland?
We have anecdotal. We've had conversations recently with our neighbouring councils, specifically targeting Brisbane City Council, who have identified a bit of a hotspot for platypus around that mid-Brisbane area. So we're trying to work with them. They had reduced positive results. And I think your question's a pertinent one and I think the answer is, we don't really, we can't quantify that. We do anticipate that the floods would have had an impact, probably twofold. One, there was a lot more water around, so there's basically dilution of any DNA evidence. And secondly, we do understand that some platypus are temporarily displaced by floods because their burrows become waterlogged. But to be able to quantify that, we're not sure. The floods in turn are also intrinsically linked to some of that sedimentation that's mentioned in the report. So increased rainfall means we've had increased inputs from sediment. So to quantify that at the moment, we're not able to do that from what we've seen.
So do we normally go to the same spots each year? Okay, so they could, because with a flood, rivers change.
Yeah, so within the report, I think there's a couple of maps and tables that show where historically we've had, we've found positive results. And we tend to revisit a number of those and then target new ones that meet the habitat suitability criteria. So basically where we'd expect them to be. And in this particular one, we went back to a few of those sites where we've had regular or historic positive results and they weren't there, with the exception, the one exception being Sandy Creek, which was actually outside of Ipswich, but the catchment itself is in Ipswich. So yeah, where we'd expect them to be, they're not. Where they've been in the past, they're not. But whether that's a permanent displacement or a temporary one because of the floods, we can't ascertain that. So we'll continue to, well, hopefully we'll continue to monitor and we may see an improvement in future monitoring programme.
Thank you, Mrs Smith. Thank you, Chair.
Are there plans, Mr Smith, to do monitoring sooner than the 12-month mark?
There isn't, but we can. We are dependent on, so we partner with Wildlife Preservation Society Queensland. They've got a PhD student in Tamile who does the work. She's also the person who's doing the work for all the other councils. So we're limited on availability on that monitoring. We're also limited on when we do it seasonally because of how platypus move and interact and are around. So there are limitations on when we get the best results also from the point of view of consistency. We like to do it at the same time every year so that if there are behavioural changes, we're picking those up in the monitoring. We could look at doing it sooner if that was something that we wanted to do, we thought would be of benefit. We can certainly look at that.
And this is just one small example of how development can impact our waterways and a really pertinent one too. I don't want to get caught up in, you know, the floods too much this year as being the anomaly and potentially affecting the data. What's true is that we see very consistently that developments with large lots of tree clearing have poor sediment control. It ends up in our waterways and we see adverse outcomes like this happen across the city. So I guess having this evidence here, this being a programme that's ongoing for your department, do you have those conversations with planning and regulatory services around compliance action? That is very important, something that needs to probably be bolstered.
Yep, very much so. And in the last probably six months, there's been an uptick on that. We've had outside help from Healthy Land and Water in terms of a kind of a local audit on compliance and erosion and sediment control, which had some interesting findings. And I'm actually, I was literally working on this prior to coming up here, working on a joint committee report for September with officers in planning and regulatory services on some of the outcomes of that report and some ways we can improve practices going forward. So yeah, again, a pertinent point. Development is potentially a big source of sedimentation in our waterways along with some of the rural management techniques, but it is something that we can, as a council, we can potentially improve and we're looking at how we can do that. So that's, yeah, the big focus of mine and officers in planning and regulatory services.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you. I look forward to seeing that report.
Yes, and likewise, I think it's known amongst us that council has the appropriate local laws governing sediment control. It is the compliance enforcement of that that probably could be done better and hopefully the, not prejudging or predetermining the results of a report, but it would be hoped that that might be a recommendation to move forward. Any further questions? Thank you, Mr Smith.
Thank you.
I'll open the item up for discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to say through you Chair, that, you know, this is a big hit. I mean, I remember 12 months ago, sitting in the chair, smiling at, you know, the platypus numbers within the LGA, arguing about the pluralisation of the word platypus and, you know, thinking really optimistic about this. But, you know, as well as being a reminder that natural disasters can have devastating effects on ecosystems, I think that it's also a reminder to bring to the front of our minds what we're doing in that compliance space. What are we doing about sediment control and development industry? Time and time again, we see, you know, large lots of trees being cleared with poor sediment control and these are the outcomes that we'll see. It's very devastating for the environment, increasing turbidity of water, changing ecosystems. It's not a good thing and I think that we could be doing more in that space and this is a timely reminder that we can do it. And as luck has it, Mr Smith is working closely with PRS and we'll be seeing a report soon about that, you know, increased compliance action or involvement in this space. So I look forward to that.
Yes, thank you councillor Fekner. It is quite clear and known by us that it is the lack of sediment control caused by human interaction in the natural environment which is causing the problems. Simple. Any further discussion? No? Then I'll put the vote, put the motion. Those in favour? Unanimous and carried. Thank you. Item four is resolution to close public land. The 22 to 23 fire season fuel reduction programme. This is a report concerning the management of public access enclosure of White Rock, Spring Mountain Conservation Estate, Flinders-Gulman Conservation Estate, Mount Granchester Conservation Estate and Hillview Drive Reserve for reasons of public safety during controlled burning fuel reduction activities and the enactment of powers under section 10, sub 1 of Local Law 7. The recommendation is as per the agenda. Do I have a mover? Thank you councillor Fekner. A seconda? Thank you councillor Kunsmann. Does any member of committee wish to ask any questions? Mayor Harding? No? No? Then I'll open the matter for discussion. Mayor Harding?
If I may, just with the two flood events we've had in our city, we've had in our community, there's a lot of fuel out there. So it's really important that we do these preventative measures to prevent bushfires in the future and especially this coming season.
Absolutely. Precautionary measures are always far better than fixing a problem. Any other discussion? No? Then I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Unanimous and carried. Item five is proposal for renewing resilient rivers, Brema River Catchment Officer, hosted as a partnership between Scenic Rim and Ipswich City Council. This is a report concerning the renewal of the existing partnership with Scenic Rim Regional Council and the South East Queensland Council of Mayors through the Resilient Rivers Initiative to financially support the continuation of the Brema River Catchment Management Officer role. The recommendation is in two parts as per the agenda. Do I have a mover? Councillor Fekner, do I have a seconda? Thank you, Mayor Harding. Does any member of committee wish to ask any questions? No? Then I'll open the matter for discussion. Councillor Fekner?
It's really a small price to pay considering the benefits that we get out of this catchment officer. So I speak in support of this. $30,000 goes a long way. It means that we've got someone in a coordination role across the catchment who understands, who works with our officers, who works with the trust. You know, this is, this is a fabulous initiative from Comsec and the fact that we only have to chip in 30,000. this is a fabulous initiative from Comsec and the fact that we only have to chip in $30,000 per annum, it's well worth it.
Thank you. Yes, I've observed the incumbent officer in that role at many events and at many community meetings engaging across and I of course speak with members of community and elected representatives from Scenic Rim as well. And the role is very much valued, I find. Any further discussion? No? Then I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Unanimous and carried. Thank you. We have no matters arising on the agenda and no procedural motions and formal matters. I'll close the meeting at 11:41 in preparation for commencement of next committee, which is the Ipswich Central redevelopment committee. Thank you, everyone.